I want to call this meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen, January 16th at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We have several openings on various committees, please refer to the Board of Selectmen's page on the website for those. Let's go ahead and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could ask everybody to remain standing for just a moment, please. The town recently lost a very long time resident. Did a lot for this town his entire life. His family used to own the hardware store where the playground is, Lenny Robey. A longtime member of the fire department, later on his years driving the Gatra bus. So if I could just have everybody bow their head for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. And Mr. Robertson, if you would be so kind as to do the community prayer, please.
Good. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit and your dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all those who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goal of our commitment to this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that have been allowed to serve, that we may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. Keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
All right. Next up is citizens' participation. This is the time we set aside at the beginning of each meeting for any citizen that wishes to address the board, whether it's on the agenda or not. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, so if others want to go ahead and speak, they'll have ample time to do that. Do we have anybody that would wish to, you know, address the board? Mr. Belbin, come on down.
Robert Belbin, 26 Gate Street. Over the past couple of months, at least a month, I requested information from the town. The first one was on town-owned properties, and I got that information, compiled some of the information for that. But I wanted just to be aware of, one thing that I really found out was, when I was going through these, was the town of Plymouth owns land in Carver, which I found that really interesting. And I don't know if they're paying taxes on that land, or if they have to pay taxes, but this would be commercial land over by the airport. And there's two separate ones, there's the Plymouth Airport, but then there's the Town of Plymouth. So that's land that should be taxed. Which brings me to my next part, was I asked about the taxes and who's not paying their taxes, and I got two different lists. One's properties and tax title, and the other one is ones from 2017. And I think that the Board of Selectmen should be getting these lists every year to take a look at them, because some of the properties that I found were like Cedar Swamp, we're never going to get money from those. There's some other properties that one owns $100,000 where the person has passed away. We're never going to get the $100,000 from this person ever. The property isn't really worth that much anyways. There's other properties too that really need to be looked at, and there was, I guess, a town-owned properties committee or whatnot, but these have been going on for years and years and years. And even I found some with your name attached.
Not my name, my father's name.
Is that father?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Your father's name, I'm sorry about that. But his name on it, and it goes back that far, but they're still on the hook here for money. And one was, if we totaled everything up, it was $880,000. And the other one from just last year is $200,000-something thousand. Some of this money we'll get back and some we won't. But they're still on the books that we are here, that we should be going after properties that possibly, that the ones that are $100,000, all right, it's going to cost us more money to go to court for it. I understand that, to take that property, but it would clear it off the books. But if we can get money from some of these properties, we should be going after them. And like you said, this has been going on for years and years and years, and I don't think that the committee that you had before, to be totally honest, did a good job. Because for me going through this, there's a lot of properties out there. And my final one I'm just going to say is, the state-owned land over on Spring Street there, that they're up for auction, for sale or whatever there, we own a small slither in between those two properties that separates. It's a small slither, but guess what? They're going to sell this property and this property, and we're right in the middle with a small slither that we'll never get money for unless we do something with the state. So I think that should be a top priority for you guys to go to the state and say, hey, listen, we have this small slither property that separates your two lots, okay? We'll send it into you guys, we'll transfer it to you guys, but we want to be paid for that, small slither, so it really incorporates that whole area for us in our town, okay? So I think that someone needs to really look at this. You guys look at it, go back to the town officials and say, hey, listen, we need to get on this and fix these. Get the money that we should be getting. Like you said, I'm not going to throw people under the bus, but I mean, if you're working toward one, and I know one, they're working, they're trying to pay it off, all right, from years and years, which is great, but you guys really should be deeply involved in knowing what's going on and how things are being done. And if we can get $100,000, $200,000, $300,000, that's a teacher, that's a police officer. I mean, that's new equipment here in this town. This is money that we should be going after, that we need to. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's not on our agenda tonight, but it's certainly something that will take on our advisement, and perhaps we'll need to put it on our agenda. Mr. Villanowski.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I realize this isn't on the agenda, but I think it's always important to correct information if it's been said out there, it's only one-sided, so the public doesn't think that what Bob has said, even though he's reviewed information, it's not the full story. And the rest of the story is that any of the property that's out there currently is paying 14% interest as being accrued to that property. The second is, the town has a TOPS committee. The TOPS committee reviews all of the property in town to determine what is appropriate to move forward with tax title, because there is a cost to it. We are pursuing other alternatives, which is called land of low value, which reduces down the legal costs like Cedar Swamp, to take some of those parcels back that have been habitual abandonment, and that we do need to take those over. So again, it's not to get into a discussion tonight, but I do want the public to understand that there's not money sitting out there that's never going to be collected. When this money does come in, it's one-time money, it goes into a free cash standpoint, it goes into our free cash every year, it's not reoccurring. So you would never hire someone off of one-time funding as well. And in a future meeting, I'll bring more information back to the board, just to further clarify some of the statements that were made tonight. But again, I don't want the public to think that this is not being addressed, because it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. If we could have Lacy Aronamo, we are honoring her tonight for her efforts to help Boston Children's Hospital during the holiday seasons, and welcome.
Hello.
Oh, you've got to get closer to microphone with, we want everybody to hear your voice. So could you just tell us a little bit of what it was that you did?
I got in touch with Boston Children's Hospital to see if they accepted care packages as a donation, and then I compiled the list of items that would be acceptable to get donated, and I put that list in the school and on social media and accepted donations. And then I organized them by age and gender, and then compiled them into care packages.
And how many of these care packages did you put together?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Yeah.
Wow. Over a month, two months?
It took a month to get all the donations together, and then about three weeks to organize and make the care packages.
That's amazing, and that's tremendous job. Anybody wish to say anything? Questions? Go ahead.
It's really terrific, Lacy, thank you. What prompted you to do this?
I just wanted to help some people, so I did some research on it and found the idea of care packages.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Lacy, I just want to commend you for doing that at such a young age, to take the initiative on your own, that's what a true leader is all about. Now, I just have a follow-up question, is did you do this all on your own, or did you seek out volunteers to help you put those packages together?
The only person that helped me with it was my math teacher, Ms. Hane. She allowed me to keep the donations in her room, and she helped me organize them.
Thank you so much, congratulations.
Excuse me, just out of curiosity. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson. I was just curious, what types of things went into the care packages?
There was board games or toys. For the older ones, there was like art supplies and notebooks and all sorts of different things. There was about 600 items donated.
Wow, that's great, congratulations.
Okay, if I could have the board meet me out front, and Lacy? Up front, center. We're going to embarrass you, we're going to do it all out.
Okay, Board of Selectmen, certificate of recognition to Lacy Aronamo for her public service initiating, collecting, and organizing donations for the young patients at Boston Children's Hospital, December of 2017, time of Board of Selectmen.
If I could have the board remain standing, please. Chief, you might want to have to grab a mic from that desk. Williams already talked, okay? Hey, board, you go ahead and sit down.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone tonight. We're here for the appointment of Captain Frank Nye, Lieutenant Danny Wilcox, Lieutenant Austin White, Lieutenant Jeffrey Thomas, Lieutenant Sean Bogart, and Assistant Dive Master John O'Connell. Tonight marks another progressive step forward for the Carver Fire Department in the protection of our residents and our community. We're here to officially recognize the accomplishments and officially swear in our six newest fire officers. Each of these new fire officers are held to the highest regard by their fellow firefighters, officers, and myself. As with all our firefighters, each is elected to their position by their firefighters based on required state certifications and ultimately appointed by myself, serving a minimum of three-year term. The Carver Fire Department maintains an office corps of two deputies, four captains, six lieutenants, a dive master, and an assistant dive master. Before I ask Town Clerk Lynn Doyle to officially swear in each of our new six officers, I feel that it's important to me to outline some of the accomplishments and dedications of each one of them. I'm very proud of them. If I could have Captain Frank Nye, please step forward. Stand right here, sir. Frank has been a member of our department since April of 2003, providing 14 years of dedicated service to our community. In December of 2012, Frank was officially promoted to Lieutenant of Company Three, South Carver District. As a Lieutenant of Station Three, Frank works alongside Captain Matt Sears and Lieutenant Chris Vincent, managing 23 firefighters. Frank has successfully become certified firefighter one-two, fire officer one, fire officer two, fire instructor one, fire officer, fire prevention officer basic, fire prevention officer one, and fire safety officer by the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Frank also serves as a full-time lieutenant in the Massachusetts Military Reservation in Otis. Frank is a third-generation fire captain, with his father, Mike Nye, currently serving as a firefighter and past captain of Station Three. Frank's brother, Matt Nye, is also a firefighter along with him at Station Three. Having been ingrained in the Carver Fire Department since a child, Frank has earned his fellow firefighters, his officers, and my respect. Frank is lucky to have a very supportive family. Tonight, we have Frank's son Nathaniel here. Today's his fourth birthday, and he is going to give Frank his badge along with his mom, Crystal. Crystal and Nathaniel, if you could please come forward.
How cool is that?
If I could have Lieutenant Danny Wilcox, please step forward. Danny has been a member of our department since 1996, providing 22 years of dedicated service to our community. I'd like to thank Danny for his service and officially recognize him as Lieutenant of Company One, Senate Carver District. As Lieutenant of Company One, Danny will be working alongside Captain Eric Weston and Lieutenant Robert Mittendorf. Danny has successfully become certified to the level of firefighter one-two and fire instructor one by the Mass Fire Academy. Danny also serves as a current station trainer at Station One. As an electrician, Danny was instrumental in volunteering his time, his crew's time, and materials to help wire our new training facility at zero labor cost. Danny is also known as our resident chef at Company One, and I can attest to have enjoyed many of his firehouse meals. Having been with the department for 22 years, Danny has earned his fellow firefighters, his officers, and my respect. Danny has asked that his fiancee, Missy, please come forward and present his badge. If I could have Lieutenant Austin White, please step forward. Only hurt for a minute. Austin is a member of our department since April of 2005, dedicating 13 years of service to our community. I'd like to thank Austin for his service and officially recognize him as Lieutenant of Company Two, North Carver District. As Lieutenant of Company Two, Austin will be working alongside Captain Bill Frolick and Lieutenant Josh McDervin. Austin also serves as the department's dive master for the past three years. Austin has become certified to the level of firefighter one-two and fire instructor one by the Mass Fire Academy, and is also a station trainer at Station Two. Austin is a very hands-on and talented individual, instrumental in donating his time and materials to remodeling the interior of our Station Two. Austin donated materials and worked alongside his fellow officers and firefighters during the extensive renovations this past year, and he has earned our respect. His service to his company and his department will never be forgotten. Austin has asked that his wife Kate, please come forward and pin his badge. If I could have Lieutenant Jeffrey Thomas, please step forward. Jeffrey has been a member of our department since 2010, providing eight years of dedicated service to the community. I'd like to thank Jeffrey for his service and officially recognize him as Lieutenant of Company Three, our South Carver District. As Lieutenant of Company Three, Jeffrey will be working alongside Captain Frank Nye and Lieutenant Sean Bogart. Jeffrey has become certified to the level of firefighter one-two and fire instructor one by the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Jeffrey also serves as a station trainer of Company Three. Jeff is also an electrician, and Jeff was instrumental in volunteering his time to help wire the new training facility, again at a zero cost. Having been with the department for eight years, Jeffrey has definitely earned his firefighters, fellow officers, and my respect. I'm very honored that Jeffrey asked me to give him his badge tonight. Could I have Lieutenant Sean Scooter Bogart? Got to be serious. Sean has been a member of our department since 2012, providing six years of dedicated service to our community. Prior to that, Sean served as a member of the New York Fire Department for many years. I want to thank Sean for his service and officially recognize him as Lieutenant of Company Three, our South Carver District. Sean will be working alongside Captain Frank Nye and Lieutenant Jeffrey Thomas. Sean has successfully become certified to the level of firefighter one-two, fire instructor one, and has a hazardous material operations level by the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Sean has a beautiful family and is one of our more humorous firefighters. Sean has asked that his wife Jen, please come up and pin his badge, and his daughter, Madison. Madison, would you come up?
Yeah.
Is she happy?
She's happy.
Last but not least, if we could have Assistant Dive Master John O'Connell, please step John has an interesting story. John was a member of the Hanover Fire Department, starting in 2010, after he was trained in Carver through our recruit training program. Back then, all Hanover firefighters attended Carver's recruit training program. John was a standout in his class, with all of us keeping a watchful eye on him throughout his career. Wouldn't you know that in 2016, John decided to move to Carver? Since then, John has been nothing but a model firefighter within Company One, so much so that he even recruited two additional Hanover firefighters and one Norwell firefighter to move to Carver. All have been outstanding firefighters for us. John has a passion of diving, and I am proud to promote him to the rank of Assistant Dive Master. As the Assistant Dive Master, John will be working alongside Austin White, a dive master, and a team of 10 divers and numerous support personnel. John has successfully become certified to open water and advanced-level diving. John is a very hands-on and talented individual that'll help our dive team advance to any of the higher level. John has asked that his father, Kevin, please come up and provide, pin his badge. If I could officially call forward Captain Frank Nye, Lieutenant Danny Wilcox, Lieutenant Austin White, Lieutenant Jeffrey Thomas, Lieutenant Sean Bogart, and Assistant Dive Master John O'Connell, and call forward our town clerk to please swear them in.
I have one question. Why did the four-year-old pin you guys easier than on me? Good evening. Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am John O'Connell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a duly-appointed firefighter.
As a duly-appointed firefighter.
In and for the Town of Carver.
In and for the Town of Carver.
And in accordance.
In accordance.
With the rules and regulations.
With the rules and regulations.
Of the Carver Fire Department.
Of the Carver Fire Department.
The bylaws of the Town of Carver.
The bylaws of the Town of Carver.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Chairman of the Board of Selectmen has offered to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Chief. I won't say how many years ago I was in the same position that you were today, gentlemen, being bashed as lieutenants and the officer and assistant dive master. This is the continuing growing and strengthening of the Carver Fire Department. It takes a lot of effort to go ahead and take on this added responsibility, but remember, guys, this job's just starting. You've got a long way to go and to grow, and that's the great thing of watching our department, is watching firefighters come in, then decide if they want to get the further education, and become the leaders of the fire department. So we're all continually growing, and we're extremely fortunate to do it. So I just want to congratulate each and every one of you for the job you've decided to take on, as well as the existing officers and firefighters. Chief Weston, Deputy Germain, Assistant Deputy Boyle, thank you so much for your dedication, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Well.
It's just like there are some good guns.
There are more good women than good guns.
You're all welcome to stay. I know we have such riveting meetings. All right. Moving on, next topic is the FY17 audit presentation from representatives of Powers and Sullivan. If you'd come on down, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. That was very nice.
Hopefully I won't need it, but you never know. Oh.
Thank you.
You're gone.
Everybody's gone.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the room thinned out real quick here.
Don't take it personally.
Nope. Don't take it personal.
All the fun's all spent on.
Mike, do you want to introduce?
Do we have, just to go on the screen?
No.
Okay.
So we have our auditor, Richard Sullivan from Powers and Sullivan, to give you an overview of the fiscal 2017 financial statements.
Okay. What I have put together was a little PowerPoint presentation, just to, so I don't lose track, but I also wanted to just give you an idea of what we do, how we do it, when we do it, and then give you some observations in terms of what I call audit results as well as financial results, which is how your year went, FY17 went. That's basically what goes on page two. So, just for clarity, our audit objectives are a little different than you might, some people consider audits to be. We're tasked with trying to come up with an opinion on your financial statements that basically says, "Nothing is materially misstated, and things are presented fairly in conformance with all the guidelines that are out there." There's GAAP, there's GASB, there's government auditing standards, there's auditing standards required by the United States of America. We try to incorporate all that into the work that we do every fiscal year. The idea behind it is, we're responsible for making sure that there's nothing materially misstated, which means if somebody picked up your financial statements, would they make a wrong decision based on what they're seeing? And most of the folks that really pay attention to this stuff are people like Standard Paws, because they're rating your bonds, which I'm pretty sure AA and stable, and they're rating your bond so that potential buyers out there will want to buy them. You know, the $30 million that you issued in FY16, that was, went out good, had a good rate, and was actually readily accepted by the market, and that's because you've got a good financial house in order. So what our job is, is to try to come up with an opinion that basically says, "These things are presented fairly." Embedded in there and in other parts of the document, we talk about management's responsibility. And what that is, is basically, management has to take full responsibility for the audit. We actually only owe two pages of a 70-page report, and that's the opinion. The rest of it is all information that's maintained and compiled by the two people sitting at my left and right, and then given to us, which we then put together in the form of a financial statement. But management's responsibility is clear. Everything that's in there, they own. Our job, because it makes sense, we know what we're doing, and we also, you know, we don't get at the boot level like these folks do, our job is to put the financial statements together and get them in conformance with GAAP, and that's what we do. We don't do anything else but do that, and of course, perform the audit. To start off with the audit results, there are, there's three reports, two reports that have multiple opinions on them. Opinion on the financial statements is one opinion, and is what we call an unmodified opinion. In layman's terms, it's a clean opinion, which means there's nothing in there that should indicate anything should be changed or you should be concerned with. It's the highest level of a report that you can get, and it is something that you want to have, you need to have. The other opinion is that on the federal awards reports, we had issued three opinions on that. One is compliance with laws and regulations, another is compliance with the objectives or the needs of the major grant that gets audited, and the final thing is, is the federal awards report clearly and accurately reported. Three opinions in there, three unmodified opinions, again, three good opinions. There is a report that we also issue, which is the management letter. That's not really called an opinion, it's more like a letter to you, but what you don't want to hear is a couple of words. You don't want to hear me say significant deficiencies, or you don't want to hear me say material weakness, because then we'd be talking about a whole different level of internal control issues. You didn't have anything like that this year, or you haven't as long as I've been here. Well, we may have had a little issue a few years ago, but that's okay, that's done. So you don't have to worry about that. I'm going to talk about the management letter and share with you what I think should be shared, but it's really more of things that can be done better versus that being any serious issues. So let's talk about the financial statements. There's four elements of the financial statement. I've already talked about the opinion, then there's the actual financial statements themselves, which are called the basic financial statements along with the notes, and then you get into the back of the report, which is called required supplementary information. Again, 70 pages of stuff, very difficult to get through. If I was you and I wanted to read one thing, read the management's discussion and analysis. That's the very front of the report, and what it is, at least I remember this when I was in high school, it's like Monarch notes. If you didn't want to read the book, you took the Monarch notes, right? And that's what that kind of tells you. It tries to tell you in a simple way in a synopsis what the remaining 65 pages will tell you in detail. And that's basically how it should go. Now, the RSI, there's some pretty important stuff in there, and probably the most important thing is, there's a schedule back there that talks about budget to actual, which says, "Here's all the revenues expected to collect, I mean, you expected to collect, and how much did you collect? Here's your total appropriations, including prior recumbrances, and what you spent against them." This is how you run the town. You know, Peg's probably giving you ministry reports to say, "How are we doing our revenue expectations? How are we doing so far with our appropriations?" These are the numbers that you're working with, and that's the numbers that we opine on in the back on the schedule. There's a whole bunch of other stuff in there related to pensions and OPEB. It's pretty confusing. I do understand it, but it's pretty confusing. But if there's one thing I would talk about with the RSI is, pay attention to the budget to actual schedule. Quickly on the audit dates, we break the audit into two periods. There's a period in the spring that we come in, and then a period usually in October, been pretty standard schedule since we've been doing this. And in the prelim, we try to get stuff done that's not based date-specific, meaning June 30th is not necessary. The budget's already been around for several months, we audit the budget. We can look at the single audit, which requires cooperation with the school. We look at debt, because a lot of times there isn't any issue debt, so we can do all those schedules. We do four tests of transactions. We look at receipts, we look at expenditures, we look at payroll, and we look at journal entries. We select at least 25 each of those, and we go through all that and get all that done in the spring. And then, in the fall, we come in and basically we walk down the balance sheet. Now, the thing that's really important in terms of the year-end stuff is that we have to get good, clean information, at least usually two weeks before we come in, because we work with it, we put it in our software and we get it going. And what that means is, I've got to have really good cooperation with the team, my client that I'm coming in to do work with. One of the things that I like to think of and hope our clients will be is what I call audit-ready, which means they not only got us the information, but when I come in and I ask for the cash, it's right there waiting for me. When I ask for receivable reconciliations, it's right there waiting for me. When I go to them and say, "Can you pull these 25 invoices?" Because I've got to determine, if we had a proper cutoff, they take them and they run with them. So I just wanted to, you should know that I consider the audit to have great cooperation with Megan or financial team, and that is appreciated, because we kind of come in like the Marines. We get in, we get out, and hopefully we've done a good job, and because of their readiness, we were able to do that. Talk a little bit about the general fund. You have a $42.7 million budget. Your revenues came in $1.3 million, more than you anticipated, which is consistent with last year, and expenditures plus encumbrances were under budget by a little over a half million dollars. What that tells me is the budget, your crystal ball for putting into the gate of the budget was pretty good. And a couple other things that are worth noting about the general fund, you have $8.4 million in your total fund balance, which includes the stabilization funds, but it's still important. And what that means is, your general fund balance is nearly 20% of your total expenditures. Your unassigned fund balance, which is the portion that's unencumbered, is 13.8%. These are good numbers. These are the kind of numbers that S&amp;P likes to see, and the maintenance, using reserves is okay, but the maintenance of reserves is really important, and I like it. Now, you actually used about $2.9 million in free cash, or budgeted, I should say. That could sound like a lot, but I don't consider it to be, because pretty much, if not everything that free cash was used for was a one-time item, meaning it wasn't structurally into your budget, it's going to appear the very next year. You funded pension, no, you funded unemployment reserves, you funded a health reserve, you funded the stabilization, you bought some capital equipment with it. These are all one-time expenditures, and the use of free cash when it's created, one-time use, and then if you get created again, another one-time use. You habitually do not use any free cash as part of your original budget. It usually comes in after the certification has occurred and is part of your STM later in the year. So the way I've seen it work here, I just commend it. I think it's the right way to do it, and I would actually like to see some of my other clients do it as well. The two biggest liabilities you have on the balance sheet, except for debt, is the net pension liability and your OPEB liability. Your net pension liability at the end of the year, and this is your portion of the Plymouth County retirement system, was $18.6 million. Last year was $17.3. The evaluation for this was dated 8-1, I'm sorry, 1-1, and they're still using a discount rate of 8%, which I think is fine. Some people claim that sometimes having a higher discount rate like that should not be done. I think this is all right. The pension for Plymouth is about, more than 58% funded. I don't know if they elected to go out to 2040, I don't, didn't pay attention to that, but 58% is not bad. I've seen several retirement systems, much larger than this, who are in the 30s and 40s. So they're there, and I think they're going to get there. So the idea behind this is that it's a big liability, and you just should know it, and it's sitting there on your balance sheet. Your OPEB liability, this actually got better in FY17. The primary reason is, you used to use a discount rate, which is the rate of return you can get on an investment, of 4%. The actuary appropriately changed that to 6.83. And the reason is, what they do is, they do this little calculation that says, "If I were to pay out these benefits, as I project them to be over the course of time, will it be any time that I can see in the foreseeable future that there will not be enough money in here to fund these expenditures?" And the answer was no. They call it a cutoff table, and you just go down 20, 30 years. So by being able to use your 6.83% versus 4%, your liability actually went down in FY17, which is terrific. Now, I want to just talk about new GASB. The reporting for the financial statements this year was GASB 45. All the notes and new RSI related to GASB 74. And what that is, is basically saying, or prepping, anybody who has an OPEB trust to report the same way as you did under GASB 68, which was, I just previously talked about, the pension liability. There's a whole series of footnotes and a whole series of schedules in the back associated with pension liability. They're mirroring that right now for the OPEB liability. So we probably added six or seven pages, eight pages in total for just the disclosures of GASB 74. There's three schedules in the back and about three and a half extra pages of footnotes. What's going to happen next year is GASB 75. GASB 74 is the sister to GASB 75, and what that means is, that $27.5 million that we're currently reporting as an OPEB liability is coming off the books, and we're going to put the total unfunded liability on the books. That's why I think it's pretty important that you begin funding this thing. $638,000, I think it was at the end of June? And just keep, try to keep at it, because now that the total liability is on there, it's just going to, it's basically creating a larger deficit in your statement of activities, a statement of net assets, excuse me. Now, I will tell you this, and I probably said this last year, this information's all embedded. The people who do the bond ratings, they know all this stuff is out there, and it was always fully disclosed in the footnotes. It's just that now, the GASB is saying, it's not being hidden in the footnotes anymore, it's going to be right on the face of the financial statements. And it draws attention, because it's big. Governmental debt, talk a little bit. $21.9 million, it was new, no new debt, long-term debt issued in 2017, but you did have a $3 million ban that was used for some repairs on the elementary school and the high school. That would go long-term probably this year? I don't know.
Yes.
Next to me? Okay. Okay. That's fine. Debt service, one of the things that I talked about, I'm pretty sure last year, your debt service was so low before you went out with the $30 million last year. Right now, your debt service is 5.4% of your budget. That's a healthy number. What they like to see for people who are managing debt, they don't, they say, "Pick a range. It could be a policy, it could be whatever range you want it to be, but pick a range and keep it there." Because as, there's a laddering effect, when debt service goes down, the idea is, with a good CIP, you're going to continue issuing debt to stay at the 5% or 6% range, so that you're not missing or letting key assets deteriorate. That's the key word, that's what debt service means to me. If you've got a good debt policy and a good way to keep it at a certain level, that means you're paying attention to what you have to pay attention, because debt is used to build things, and that's what, that's how I look at that. Let's see, capital additions. Most of it was related to the elementary school. You put $19.8 million on the books this year. Again, we don't capitalize everything, but the $14.7 was for the elementary school, another $3.9 was for the fire station, which got finished off, and then with vehicles, services, chrome books, which totaled about $700,000. Okay. That's kind of been my quick highlight of how we go about it, and some of the things that I think are worth talking about as it relates to your operations. Now, I don't talk at all really about some of the, the enterprise funds are very small here, so there's not a lot going on there, and what we call non-majors, which is all the grant funds, they're just driven by whatever grant comes in. So the key operating statistic for me is to pay attention to unreserved fund, unassigned fund balance, what your levels of debt service are, what's the ratios of your certain, of your expected receipts, as well as what you get in actual receipts. All these things point to what I would call, for 17, positive results. And before I go on to talk about the other report, is there anybody that wants to ask any questions right now?
I do. Michael might be able to answer one. Oh, I'm sorry. When you mentioned the revenues increased by 1.3 million, do you know at the top of your head what triggered that? Because we want to keep that going.
It wasn't an increase, it was more like a difference between the budgeted amount and the actual amount.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, never mind, that answered my question.
Okay.
And then on, when you're talking about GASB 75, and that we're going to have to account for all of the liability.
Yep.
How is that going to impact us from?
It's going to, it's going to deteriorate what I call your, down the bottom, if you're, I'm not a page flipper, but if you looked at page, be with me for a second, 11, okay? Down the bottom, now, this is a lot on here, because it was kind of small, there's something called net position, and unrestricted net position was a negative $44 million. So what's going to happen is, that liability is probably going to go up by a 13 to 18 million, which means this deficit is going to increase by the same amount. Oh, you don't have financial statements? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But again, from what you were saying before, that really, when anybody's looking to, into bonds with us and so forth, that's all information they've known about.
That's correct.
Simply showing up above the, above the line instead of below the line.
That's correct. And one of the things that I think is important is the, what, what Standard Paws wants to know is, what's your plan? Do you have a plan to attack this? You do. I mean, again, sometimes I always say it's like the pimple on the back of an elephant, but it's a start, because, you know, having $683,000 in there and watching it grow and all that kind of thing, I think is important. So, so from my perspective is, you see the issue, it's being properly reported, you voted to create the OPEB trust, and you're funding the OPEB trust. They're all positives.
I had a question. This came up the other day in discussion. Plymouth County assesses us a payment that we make to Plymouth Retirement, and it's been suggested that perhaps we aren't necessarily paying just what we owe, but they, Plymouth County comes up with sort of a general amount.
Yep.
And that perhaps if, when they get audited, if they were to separate out individual towns, that the amount we're contributing, we might be, we might actually be subsidizing some other towns possibly.
There is a potential for that. So what, I'll tell you what, who does that? Middlesex County? Middlesex County, I don't know how many members in there, but it's over, it's maybe 60 or so, and each individual member has their own essential actuarial, actuarial report. There's an entire thing done, but all the nuances, the demographics of like my town, Tucksbury. There is a potential for that. So, what, I'll tell you what, who does that? Middlesex County? Middlesex County, I don't know how many members in there, but it's over, it's maybe sixty or so. And each individual member has their own essential actuarial, actuarial report. There's an entire thing done, but all the nuances, the demographics of like my town, Tucksbury, is embedded in what they're, what they have to pay for their assessment for that year. So, what it does is mitigates the potential of something like you're talking about, whereas this higher cost for another member community, they're getting blended into what you pay. I, I don't know enough to say that's happening, but the only way to do it is to get them to do an actuarial report for each individual member community.
Do you have any sense as to what kind of financial costs would be associated if we were to request Plymouth County to do that? Would you anticipate it to be a big number or is it?
No, it's, no, I can tell you why it happened in Middlesex. Middlesex at one time was not a well-run retirement system. And it is now. And I think the member communities basically had an uprising and said, let's do this this way. But I, I don't, I don't think it's that much because, see, the actuary, the only thing that would be different with the actuary is they probably have to split out the demographics, whereas they can take the entire database and apply it to just like Plymouth County, they'd have to split it out by the member communities. And that's a little extra work. But as far as the number crunching, it, I mean, it's extra, but it's not significantly extra. But I can't be definitive as to the cost, but I know it would cost more.
But, but you wouldn't anticipate that it should be a prohibitive number?
No, no, no. Because like I said, people do it.
Can I just, we're sticking down in the unrestricted number.
Yep.
This year's forty-four million dollars in the negative. And, you know, again, this is, you know, all municipalities are struggling with this and we're obviously making the strides to, to rectify this and get ahead of things. But if you were to compare this number in a private sector business compared to the public, put that in layman's terms, what does that number mean?
If this was a private business?
Yes.
You're bankrupt. It really does mean that because what, what, you have the ability as to taxation, which means you can sustain your budget. This is trying to take what I consider budgetary basis accounting and do it based on full accrual. So, what this would mean is I'm looking at this, if I saw retained earnings in the negative, there would be some issues. But I don't, it's, what I can tell you is that this number is the same essentially, and let's just use it based on appropriation sizes, is the same where the city of Lowell is like four hundred thousand dollars negative, four hundred million dollar negative, whereas towns like Rowley are a little less. But everybody has a negative unrestricted number for the most part. The only people that don't are some of the school districts. Because they don't have a pension liability because the state picks up most of their retirement system with the teachers.
And as it ties into OPEB, if we don't tackle OPEB, OPEB is just going to take a bigger percent of our budget every year. This number will proportionally grow in a higher percentage.
Yes.
Not only a bigger number, but it'll eat up a bigger portion of our budget every year, which then reduces down our operating side of the budget because we're putting more into these long-term, you know.
It's the one, it's kind of the one thing you can't control. Your assessment for retirement will fluctuate. But there's a drop dead day when that's going to be funded. Mass General Law says that has to happen. There's no such law or policy or anything related to OPEB. It's, it's a local level problem that has to be dealt with at the local level. Because I remember when, and just not to go too far, but they were talking about the state's going to step in and take care of this. State, I can't imagine what the number is for the state. So, that's, um, okay, let me, so, I mean, I'll just finish off real quick. This is, the next one's a minute. The single audit, there's a report that you have or would have called Report on Federal Awards. And in there, three opinions that I talked about earlier. There's also a schedule that says how much you spent, which is about a million bucks. It also says what major, what grant we tested, which is called a special education cluster. It's usually three grants that all have special education expenditures part of them. Bottom line is, three opinions, all clean, no issues, no findings, no question cost. Doesn't get better than that. The management letter, this is the only report that we really own. And all I wanted to do, I'm kind of breaking these things down into prior year comments and current year comments. It's, it's in detail here and it's summarized on here. You had some prior comments, I had five prior year comments and two resolved, which I think is great. And some of them are already in progress too. Like I know progress has been made on, we talked about consolidating town service from like budgeting standpoint. I know there's been improvements on that. I also know that the documentation of internal controls is in place, might be trying to be done, but it's still unresolved. Current year comments.
And again, you're commenting on last year's audit.
That's great.
It's happened since July first.
That's right.
This year is not included in the management letter.
Yep. Cash collections, what we did is we have a comment that might, cash is tough. You know, when somebody pays by cash, as soon as you see something like that, you know that there's a potential, potential now, I'll say, for something to go wrong. So, if you're, if you're concerned about any particular department, there's too much cash, things like requesting checks, things like putting in potential credit card transactions. Or what I see some of my other communities do, they'll go to the collector, pay the bill, take a receipt and go to the department that's issuing the license or the permit. So that there's no cash at the department level. That's really the, the key that you try to do because they're not, they're not in the business of doing cash. The business of doing whether the programmatic side of their business is. And cash just kind of gets in the way. So, if they're just taking receipts to indicate you paid, that's one way to build a little bit more of better internal control. Again, I'm not worried about it, but I'm just saying that, that's something we observed. We believe that North Carver Water District, there's been some personnel changes over there. And I'm, right now, I think that, that the receivable reconciliation that was being done isn't being done. The highest form of internal control from my perspective is things get reconciled. If they're reconciling between two, like the town account and detailed books, that means controls are in place. It's not a lot of money, but it's something that we thought was worth highlighting. I talked about Gatsby seventy-five already, so I'll pass on that. And then there's a comment in here, which gets to your point, Mr. Clark, regarding Plymouth County Retirement Association. I actually put in there, and I'll be honest with you, Mike had mentioned it to me. He's, that it, it may be worthwhile to explore the possibility of having that done at the retirement system. Whether it can be done, I don't know, but it might be something to consider. And that's pretty much it. Let me summarize just to help you out. First of all, I, I am a businessman, so as I mentioned earlier, I was very pleased with the cooperation I, I got, you know, from the people here. Having a sense of urgency is really important and I appreciate it very much and that, that was there. The other thing I like about it too is normally when I get the drafts to out, they do a pretty good review of it. Usually it's a better quality product when, after the reports have been reviewed. We probably would have had this before you a lot sooner, but we had to wait for Plymouth County Retirement System because there's a report they have to issue in order for us to do the pension liability and they were way behind. But we were, we were, we were right on schedule. So, more than happy to answer any other questions, but I just wanted to let you know. From a business perspective, I was very pleased with the way this job went.
Anybody, questions, comments?
I asked mine, I'm all set. Thank you so much once again.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work and for our financial team. Thanks for the great cooperation that you gave them.
Anybody from the finance committee have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Meg.
You know, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think as Mr. Sullivan mentioned, is, you know, he was very happy with how everything was produced and the information that's been here. We, you know, we've been going through some reorganization with our finance department over the last few years. And, you know, I'm really happy to say that I, I think everything has finally come together and is gelling really well under Meg's leadership with the team that she has assembled to do this. So, it's really showing, you know, how the town has evolved over the last few years to really improve our entire financial state. And the team that you have right now is doing a phenomenal job.
I would have to agree with that.
Absolutely, thank you.
And we might as well roll right into the town administrator updates. Keep it short.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, what I'd like to do is start with two of our budget presentations. So, if we could have our two members of our finance committee take the two comfortable chairs over there. And then if I can invite Chief West and then come up and do his presentation, followed by Chief Walsh.
Chief Walsh. See, I think that's what he meant.
How you doing?
Good.
Feel good.
Took your jacket off.
It was a pleasure.
Tie.
Hello. Just to you, just to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I like to provide you a booklet, a little kind of outlines our budget and it also will go through our capital outlay visions for the future. So, I just try to be transparent as I can and give you as much information as I can. I'll go through a few highlights of the budget and you can ask me any question you want. I just want to start out by saying that your fire department is functioning right now at a very high level. We just recently promoted six new offices, received the delivery of our new squad apparatus and are in the process of hiring six new firefighters. I'm proud in two thousand seventeen that we averaged a five point four minutes response time with a fully staffed apparatus to our community. We continue to have one of the lowest funded fire departments in the state and we're proud of that. But we continue to offer one of the best services, I feel, in the state. Now, this year's been full of challenges. We moved into our new fire headquarters, had to get acquainted with a new training facility, hired and trained a record twelve new firefighters, implemented an assistant deputy chief's position, hired a new full-time dispatcher, Matt Barrington. We renovated our station too. And we put in service three new fire engines. Our department stepped up and didn't miss a beat. And I think that any one of those challenges would be something for any fire department, one of those. So, I'm very proud of that. We have a great group of firefighters, officers, and that comes with enormous support from our community and our board of selectmen and certainly our town administrator. Your support never goes unappreciated or unrecognized, so I really want to thank you. Our department's run volume has increased twenty-four percent over the last year. And seeing a twenty-four percent increase in call and volume raises a lot of concerns. And we're seeing that this month alone, we're up almost forty percent. I can't explain why, that's across the board in all types of calls we go on. But we're definitely seeing that increase and I'm sure the EMS chief will tell you the same story with the EMS department. But a twenty-four percent increase is a lot for your fire department. We're handling that very well. But I have to try to plan a budget that's going to try to absorb some of that. In the fire service, you know, we consider it like snowplow and budget. And when we talk work with the finance committee, there's a lot of unknowns. I don't know how many calls we're going to go on. I can't tell you exactly how many firefighters are going to show up for the call. And I don't know how long we're going to be there. So, we always ask for a little leniency when we put together our budget and we usually come in pretty good. The budget that's presented is considered a level service budget. It has minimal increases where it's contract or salaries. And our operating budget was only increased very little. To go through it just, just very quickly, the fire chief's line item is in with the contract. That's based on my contract. Dispatches have been adjusted according to the non-union pay scale to the appropriate steps. The dispatchers did receive a step. Deputy Fire Chief did increase one step from a step six to a step seven. And our Assistant Deputy Fire Chief went from a step two to a step three. Again, those are right with the non-personal, non-union personnel code. Firefighters, again, that's a guess. Thanks to the help of the town administrator, we did put a two percent increase on their step. So, they'll get a two percent step, which is about three thousand dollars. I increased, we have a lot of firefighters that are trying to achieve certifications in the state, which is a good thing. When they achieve a firefighter one-two certification, we give them a two hundred dollar stipend one time. You know, that's not a lot of money, but it does at least cover some costs of their books and taking the test. So, I increased that by six hundred dollars because we do have more and more wanting to take the, challenge the exam. We also increased that line item by eleven thousand dollars due to increased call volume. Every year we get closer and closer, at the end of the year, I kind of sweat it when I'm going to have to go to the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer for firefighter salaries. Every year we just make it by. This year, we've already covered our stations with two of the storms, the ice storm and the wind storm. Those eat up our payroll very quickly, but it's something that we have to do to protect the town.
Chief, what's the average salary for a firefighter?
The average salary for a firefighter we calculated was about fourteen hundred dollars that a firefighter would make.
Per hour?
For the hour is seventeen eighty-three.
And that's from the time they arrive?
The time they arrive, the time, yeah, the time they arrive to the time they go home, there's a one-hour minimum. So, if they're there two hours, they get two hours, there's no four-hour minimum. Yep, they get paid for where they go for. A firefighter, we do pay for their training, but as always said, and I'll, I'll stick to it, a firefighter, every hour a firefighter gets paid, they donate an hour. That's very easy to say, so. And the same with our offices. Our operating budget, which is basically what we use to pay for all our fire apparatus, our extensive radio system, our personnel gear, any maintenance within the department, that has been increased by about three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Basically in four areas, protective clothing. Your firefighters wear very expensive turnout gear and we are having a significant problem with that turnout gear. It's approaching ten years old. NFPA recommends that it be taken out of service at ten years. Besides that, when we bought our gear ten years ago through a grant, was paid for at no cost to the town, we had a defection in the gear with a Velcro problem. And we've spent, with the manufacturer's help, about seventy-five thousand dollars in rectifying that problem throughout the years. And it's got to the point, the gear is just getting very worn out. So, it's a problem. We are working with a professional grant writer, Irene Winkler, who is a great friend of the Carver Fire Department and a great friend of the town of Carver. She's been very successful in helping us acquire a number of grants. So, we're working with her right now and our grant is due February third. And it'll be in the area of four hundred thousand dollars that we'll be submitting to the federal government. The town would be responsible for five percent of that or twenty percent if we're awarded it. It's a very competitive grant, very competitive with less than five percent of the fire department's actually receiving the grant. We received it ten years ago for that cause. If we're not, if we're not successful in receiving that grant, we're going to be approaching the town in two thousand and twenty to help us with that purchase. But again, as we do all our capital purchases, we try every way possible through grants or donations to try to make that happen. So, we're making the effort now. I don't want to say if I'm confident or not because I've gotten burnt before and I've been surprised before. But we are working very hard on it. It's taking a lot of time to do. So, we're putting some money in for repairs, some increased cost for repairs, some operating supplies, dues and memberships, they seem to just keep going up, so that increased five hundred dollars. And some contractual obligations, which is holiday pay and vacation time, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. That's really our budget in a nutshell. It's, it's a very simple budget. Just quickly on capital equipment. We, we intended to put into the town this year, our current water tanker is thirty years old. That's the only water tanker we have in the community. Most communities of our size that have no municipal water for fire protection have two or three tankers. We're very good at finding water, we're very proud of that. But that tanker being of that age, it's getting time to add a second tanker. This community should have two tankers and always part of our master plan. This year, we wanted to approach the town to purchase a second tanker and move our primary tanker more into a reserved status and we could still keep it for another ten years. We worked with the town, they have asked us to hold off a year on that and we're going to do that. In the meantime, we're going to be doing some studies to find out the best price and form some committees on that. But that is something that you will see in the near future. The other thing is a cap, one capital item we do have this year and it is the only one, and I want to thank the town administrator. There will be forty thousand dollars for votes of police department and the fire department to share to hire new firefighters. New firefighters is something we do every year and that's how we keep our system going. So, the intent is to split that twenty thousand dollars either way or roughly thereabout. And that will help us buy new turnout gear for these six new firefighters that we're putting on. It's very expensive, it costs about forty-five hundred dollars to equip a new firefighter. What we do is firefighters leave our organization, we obviously take their gear they have and try to repurpose it. But we don't hire by shape, we have to hire by quality. So, we're not always, you know, successful. So, there's always coats and pants that we have to buy to keep up with it. And last year, we did the same program and it worked very successful because we just cannot afford that in our normal operating budget. Or I would have to inflate our operating budget each year and I try not to do that. So, the last thing I'll say is our current operating budget is on track, but it's very tight. I try to be as frugal as I can, but you know, this time of year, it's halfway through the year, so I really don't know where we're going to end up. We are going to hire six additional firefighters and we have that twenty thousand dollars. My biggest concern is our fire salary line item. And that's the item I've had to go to town, the reserve fund in the past, it's been a number of years. And that's just because we are twenty-four percent busier. That line item has a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars when we started and it's dropped drastically. I don't know how many snowstorms we're going to continue to get and how much more staffing we're going to. I don't know how many snowstorms we're gonna continue to get and how much more staffing we're gonna have. So if there's, there's an area of concern with the finance committee, um, usually what I try to do is wait till May and closer to June and work with the town administrator to find out if we're gonna be close or not. And then sometimes there's some money moved around at the end of the year through other town budgets or we make a decision to go to the reserve fund to help finish out the year. So I just wanted you to know that, so. The rest of the pamphlet is some information the town administrator provides and our capital program that we, uh, provide to the capital outlay committee each year. Any questions? Certainly, take any.
Finance committee, any questions?
Uh, the, uh, water tanker truck, you said 10 years is?
Uh, so no, that, uh, that vehicle is 30 years old right now, it was purchased in 1988. Uh, we had it rehabbed in 2012, I believe. Uh, we put about $40,000 into a rehab, had the frame repainted, new tires and, and, yeah, that really can survive 10 more years, but not in a full-time capacity and I, and I stress that. Um, you know, that should go more into a reserve tr- role with, that would be the second one out the door in a structured fire. Um, you know, water is critical right now and if you look around and you looked around last week, there was no water around. Every pond, you know, we had 12 and a half inches of ice on Sampson's Pond, okay? Imagine trying to get water for a structured fire in the snow. First of all, you gotta find it and we are very good at marking where they are, then you gotta get it. 12 and a half inches, it took us 45 minutes with chainsaws to cut a hole in the ice so we could send divers and a, and a ice presentation we did. So that's things I worry about and, you know, we roll with a lot of water in our apparatus to go to a call. So I'm very confident we can put out the fire, but you know, y- you need to be thinking of incidents like this, so.
On the, uh, salary for the firefighters themselves, it was 17?
I think it's roughly 83, 1783, yep.
Do we have increases in that?
So, so what we tried to do last year, we did a 1% increase. Uh, we had so many changes in the fire department, a lot of us took lesser increases. Um, I try to keep that up to 2% each step a year. Uh, I think that's fair, that's what other town employees are getting. Uh, it's not about the money in our organization and, and we all know that. Um, but we try to keep our salary at least somewhat comparable to some neighboring communities. There's call firefighters in other communities making 25, 26, $27 an hour and there's some making 16. So, um, you know, we want to make, you know, firefighters should get something to go home with and I think that's very important for their family. Um, but we try to go up about 2% a year, but we try to do.
Now, on the, the grade increases like for the deputy and the assistant deputy?
Yep.
Step one and two and three, is that, that, uh, on a schedule, yearly schedule?
Sure, so the town puts out a non-union wage classification plan, uh, each year. So we get a copy of that when we create our budget and there's 10 or 12 steps now?
12.
12 steps on that plan. A new employee would start and they're grades, A through M or Z, I don't know, something. Um, so a deputy fire chief is on a grade C, uh, third from the top. If they were new to the position, they would start at, uh, grade D, step one. And every year if they perform their job to, you know, the performance that we expect, they go to a step two. And basically it's building blocks and every step is basically a 2% increase. Um, you know, it's up to that department to recommend that for their employees and, and I certainly would love to recommend more than that for our employees, but that, that's what the town gets and that's what we do, so. Each year you see that go up till they maximize it to 12 steps. And then it's up, at that point, they're maxed and at some points, you know, the town administrator has reorganized the wage and classification plan, so, you know, our employee has some more growth to go on, you know, further in the years, but those are decided, you know, not by me, just, so.
I think the only other question I have, um, I asked you before, the new fire station.
Yep.
As far as everything working, no additional costs in there that we're aware of?
Nope, um, it's been, it's been, it's exceeded our expectations to be honest with you. Uh, it's brought the department to a level that I wanted it to see it go to and it's just gonna keep climbing. Throughout that cold snap, the building heat system was, was perfect, um, really good. I mean, I, I, very, very impressed with it. We have some warranty issues that we work with the builder on, uh, it's just a standard 12-month warranty and the builder's been great, it's gone beyond that. There was nothing major on that and they haven't started any of those repairs yet, but they're very, they're significantly minor repairs. Um, so, uh, you know, it's worked out very well.
And the work we've done on the other two stations?
Um, we've really just worked on the station two in North Carver, that was work was all done by the firefighters. They renovated a kitchen and family room area. Um, in the future, uh, we have a new officer corps, you saw tonight, that will be part of station three. I have already challenged them with trying to find ways to spruce up our station three, which was built in 1996. Um, you know, we want to see that rise to another level and, uh, I can imagine already that they're thinking of projects. Those projects will come with a price and at some point I'll probably be approaching the board, uh, with asking some money for materials, but I can guarantee you that the work would be done by us. Um, but I think it's money well spent, as we did in North Carver, we spent $15,000 and we probably spent double that in labor, that was no charge, so. It's a way to maintain the buildings. Other questions?
Members of the board.
Sounds great. Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to commend you for, for what you do every time, Craig, is, is, um, you, you really have a team there and this, all the volunteer work they do is just more evidence, so we, we really appreciate that.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Um, I always like to take this opportunity, again, to compliment the fire department on the outstanding job they do in running their department uh, and make sure that those that may not be aware, that they understand that yes, we have a call fire department, but it's probably as good, if not better, across the board than most of the full-time departments around us. I always like to remember a story, I moved into town, God helped me, 32 years ago. And, uh, I went to get-
Newcomer.
Went to get homeowner's insurance and they heard I was in the town with, uh, no town, no town water, no hydrants, call fire department, quote comes through and it was astronomical. Dealing with the, uh, my real estate broker, they said, "Oh no, call this agent." Called another agent, they said, "Oh, you're in Carver? Oh yeah, we treat you just as if you have a full-time department" because of the quality of the department. I mean, it's basically cut the price in half. And I think anecdotally that says all you need to know because insurance company isn't gonna cut you any breaks if they think there's a danger, so that, uh, just all the credit in the world to the job you do, the way you've maintained the department. I know that, uh, sometimes as the cranberry has been challenged and you rely a lot on some of the folks that are in the industry to be full-time, uh, or to, to respond and be members of the department. We seem to have weathered that staffing-wise, you're in good shape in terms of, uh, it's a healthy recruitment every year?
Every year it's been very healthy. Um, you know, call fire departments around the nation are in a decline, um, that, that's a fact and there's a lot of reasons for that. Um, but we try to learn from, you know, I try to do a lot of studying and learning for what's not working and try to make sure it doesn't happen here. So we're doing well, uh, we're always cautious, but we're doing very well.
Well, again, I think the town is extremely lucky to, uh, you, you, you won't, if you want your taxes to go up, then think of what we're saving with the, the outstanding service we're getting from the fire department as a call fire department. Again, as good or better than anyone around us.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to that for a second, I think, you know, as the chief mentioned, there is a challenge around the country for a call fire department. Said, um, the department used to have a cap of 75 people. And since we have been having some really good recruiting classes and people that are very interested, we've actually increased that so now that we, you know, have more than 80 firefighters built into the department, which is great. Uh, you know, 5.4 minutes to get to a call with full apparatuses unheard of with 20, 30, 40 people. You just don't find that in a full-call system and, and I've had some work for me and this is by far, you know, a much better situation when you just have these mass of people coming within that timeframe. And last point that I want to make at is that, um, the budget right now for the fire department is a little over $600,000. And what's important with that is in a full-time department with less people, less people than you get to a thing, you're looking at a number somewhere around the $2.5 million, $2.6 million number. My point being is that, as the chief mentioned, this is the lowest budget in the area for a full-time fire department, it is. And they're in essence saving the town anywhere from a million and a half to $2 million a year by the outstanding work that they do. And, and that needs to be recognized and I think it is by most people. And, and with that, we have an obligation. If, if they're gonna provide this level of service for that little money and be as well-trained as they are, the obligation of the town is to make sure they have the equipment and the facilities to operate out of. And, and that's what we've done, and make sure that they've had the tools to do what they need to do. So some people, you know, say, "Well, that's a very large, uh, you know, uh, fire department and, and fire building" and it may be for another town, but for our town, it's actually a huge savings for us when you actually look at the total operating cost of the department. Uh, so with that, uh, not only with the fire department, we're here with Tom and here at his department runs just as well financially. Uh, but again, it's important for us to keep on realizing we have a responsibility to make sure they have the equipment and tools to do their job.
And you always have, so thank you.
Do I get a turn?
Thank you.
You're the chairman.
I know you wanted to run away, but, um, I just like people understand, you know, you're talking about the hourly rate for a firefighter where they, you know, they don't get paid until either it's for a drill or when the tone goes up. But as has been pointed out again and again, all the volunteer, all the hours of work that go into maintaining the stations, cleaning the trucks, everything they do, they put in three times or more the amount of hours doing work gratis without being paid than they do when they're getting paid. So really, if they're making $17 an hour, thereabouts, and if you consider all the amount of time they put in, you're talking three, four bucks an hour. Nobody gets on the Carver Fire Department to get rich. They all join because they want to serve the community of Carver and protect the citizens. And you saw an example of that camaraderie and professionalism tonight with the penning of the new officers. Um, like I said, I, 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 I'm biased, I, I still consider myself part of the fire department family. I put in my years with it, where I was rank lieutenant. And I've seen how far this department has grown. You do, now, you can go to a lot of towns and they'll say, "A nearby full-time department needs mutual aid." They're not gonna call that call department, oh my God, no. We have the surrounding towns, we have a great working relationship thanks to the training and the leadership of the chief and the deputies and the officers that Plymouth loves having us come in. They know they put the call out to Carver, we're gonna show up with a deputy, at least, and the engine's gonna have a full crew. I know full-time, you know, full-time departments, you call for their ta- engine to come in to mutual aid and you're lucky if you got a driver and someone sitting in the officer's seat. Or you have a full-on department where there's a run in the town. Well, half of the permanent staff is tied up on an ambulance run, so if a fire comes in, they've only got two or three firefighters and most have, "Go ahead and start attacking this fire." We have full crews coming in, the engine's responding very quickly, so they attack this fire. When I was growing up in town, the joke was, "Well, did you save the chimney?" Our department has more stops, saving resources and for the, you know, residents of town. Perfect example was about a month ago, we had that, uh, barn fire. A 200-year-old barn, Bloom Construction. Once a fire gets going in one of those, you can pretty much call it toast. And as it, the men and women of this department made the stop and saved the contents, they saved that building. And I just want to thank the department for everything you've done, chief.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll let you, I'll let you run away now.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Walsh?
Chief Walsh?
No, about, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll find out, I'm gonna give him a preference. Would, would you prefer Director Walsh or Chief Walsh?
I don't care.
Just don't call you late for dinner.
That's right.
All right.
His, his uniform says chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm just gonna go through, as I normally do, a little bit about the department, how it operates and, uh, then just touch briefly on our budget. Um, the Carver ambulance service is an advanced life support, uh, ambulance service, operating two class one advanced life support ambulances from our quarters directly behind the town hall. The system avoids the expense of full-time personnel by utilizing paramedics and EMTs on a call and per diem basis. With this staffing model, we are able to accomplish full-time staffing without full-time personnel, which minimizes our salary cost and avoids creating any health insurance cost or fringe benefit cost for the town. This system also minimizes the ever-increasing annual training cost, which is required by the Office of Emergency Medical Services. And I'm pleased to be able to report that the EMS system and its personnel are performing very well. We have been fortunate to be able to add to and maintain our excellent EMT and paramedic staff and currently have 43 highly-trained EMS personnel, 24 EMTs and 19 paramedics. And I'm comfortable that the medical teams that respond to medical emergencies in Carver are among the best. Our extensive internal department quality assurance program that is required by the Office of Emergency Medical Services and our medical director, Dr. Tenerewicz of the Beth Israel Deaconess Plymouth Hospital, in oversight by the hospital patient care quality review system in accordance with our affiliation agreement, bear out that the quality of advanced life support care being provided by Carver EMS is of the highest quality and in compliance with all state and regional treatment protocols. Carver EMS continues to provide the excellent and timely care at the highest pre-hospital level and I feel we should be very proud, as I am, of both our system and its personnel. And with this staffing model, we're able to provide exceptional care and do it on a self-supporting basis. We continue to bring in more revenue each year than we expend and receipts go into the ambulance fund, which was created by special legislation and essentially serves as a general treasury-type account for the exclusive use of the ambulance service. The budget for the ambulance service are transfers from the ambulance fund account to the ambulance salary and operating accounts and are allocating monies that have been collected by the ambulance service. Actual receipts for fiscal year 2017, that would be the year that ended last June 30, were $703,662.95 and expenditures from the salary and operating accounts, including a lease payment on one of our ambulances, the final lease payment, total $589,460.67, which resulted in receipts exceeding expenditures by $114,202.28. Carver ambulance responded to 1,508 calls in fiscal year 2017, which was actually 2% less than in fiscal year 2016. And these numbers, they do go up and down, but generally are, are a rise. And we transported 1,128 patients, which was 13 less than in fiscal year 2016. The result was a revenues of $56,274.07 less than in fiscal year 2016. Ambulance receipts for fiscal year 2018, the current fiscal year, are exceeding those in fiscal year 2017, as is the volume. We attribute much of the loss of revenue between fiscal year 2016 and 2017 to be a combination of less billable runs, as I just indicated, an increase in the number of people without insurance and an increase in the number of people with government insurance, Medicare and Medicaid, and less people with private insurance. We're up to about 77% of the people we brought to the hospital in fiscal year 2017 either had Medicare or Mass Health. So my budget this year is a level service budget, which provides primarily for an EMS crew of one paramedic and either one or two EMTs on duty 24 hours a day, 360 valid days a year with at least one of the crew members standing by at the station, providing for an immediate response of the primary due ambulance, duty ambulance to medical emergencies. The budget request includes an 8% increase in the salary account to accommodate antici- anticipated increased call volume, which is generally running right now 8 to 10% more than last year, increased training requirements, which continually are rolled out by the Office of Emergency Medical Services on a weekly basis, and any salary increase approved by the Board of Selectmen, which will be determined after town meeting. I also have included additional funds to provide for the flexibility to increase staffing on shifts, which history has shown to be busy. And in-town personnel, those available to handle a second call while off-duty is limited to, to better cover calls that are received when our primary ambulance is already committed to a patient. This approach, we started this year and it has dramatically improved the, or lessened the amount of times that we've needed mutual aid. And the, uh, operating account is, uh, the budget has an, in 5% increase in the operating account due to the cost of medical supplies. account due to the cost of medical supplies increasing at a rate that exceeds inflation. The ambulance fund is in sound financial condition, with a starting balance in fiscal year 2018, as of July 1, 2017, of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. That's after we took two hundred and twenty thousand dollars out for our new ambulance, which actually just happened to arrive this afternoon, and also the budget for fiscal year 2018. So after we took everything to get us through this year and buy the new ambulance, which we bought with cash, we still, we started with over a quarter of a million dollars there. And the receipts this year are building on that so that the fund continues to be healthy and in sound financial condition. And I'll be glad to answer your questions.
I'm going to start with the Board of Selectmen this time, if you guys don't mind. Anybody?
Mr. Clark.
Uh, Tom, again, just want to congratulate you and your department on the way it's run. Again, citizens should be aware that we're getting this ambulance service without a charge back to the taxpayers, that essentially it's being, as you say, the fees for the run. I'm amazed to hear that between Medicare and Medicaid, it's up to seventy-seven percent of the, of the monies, which obviously impacts how much you can collect.
That's right. That's right. And we had a little over ten percent without insurance. Um, so that, uh...
But I know we've had, unfortunately, a couple of occasions where the, they've had to stop by my house. One time is when my wife went in my travel bag and thought she was taking ibuprofen, but it turned out to be my blood pressure medication. So she was out like a light pretty quick, so she got carried out of the house in that case. But, um, anyway, it's just, they do a phenomenal job, very caring. I've seen, I've been at the scene of accidents and just seen the way they respond. It's, again, we're getting top-flight professional service, essentially at no cost to the town. So it's just, and I thank you for, how long you been doing this now?
Well, I've been an EMT since 1984.
1984.
Yes, and I've been in charge of the department since 1992.
And importantly, he has nine point seven years left on his contract.
Right. One of the advantages of our staffing system is, as you mentioned, the quality of the EMTs and paramedics is that this is usually a second job or a third job for most of the people who are working here. And many of them are full-time firefighters or with, or with the ambulance, private ambulance services. And these are the people who choose to do this with their off-time as well, to this, to that second job. They tend to be the people who like it and are better at it. And they're not, you know, there are a lot of firefighters who may be EMTs or paramedics, because that's the only way they could get a full-time job as a firefighter or a paramedic. But that's really not their love, and they may be off being an electrician, and they all have second jobs, third jobs, and we're that second, third job. And it brings to, in my opinion, a qual- a higher quality of, of overall for the service.
Tom, do you want to speak to that legislative scare we had back in early November?
Sure. Years ago, when I started, many years ago, we actually used to bill Medicare rates, because Medicare rates approximated actually paying for the cost of the service. Medicare over the years has slipped to the point it doesn't pay anywhere's near the cost of an ambulance service, and Medicaid is worse than Medicare. And so all services are billing at some percentage higher than just Medicare. We're currently billing at two hundred and twenty-five percent of Medicare, okay? Which puts us in the two hundred customers of the three hundred and twenty municipalities, or the three hundred and twenty ambulance services in the town, in the state, puts us about in the middle of the pack, okay? We're not in the top fifty or even in the top hundred, okay? Uh, well, maybe we might be in the top hundred, but we're not in the top fifty. And there was legislation, both in the Governor's House One, the Governor's Budget, that came out in July, and then that, and then later in subsequent legislation, which was designed to fashion the healthcare and, and save health costs, which really didn't do. And they were going to limit to a hundred towns from, they could not bill over a hundred and sixty percent of Medicare. That would have meant about two hundred thousand dollars to us. And...
And that's money you would have had, that would have had to come back to the town for.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And so it's, I always find it disappointing to see budgets from the state with that in it, and I, um, and, but I'm glad that through the efforts of, and Michael was, was helpful with this as well, and we talked with Pachicos people, and I called them as well, that, you know, the Mass Municipal Association and the Mass Fire Chiefs Association were, you know, instrumental in getting this knocked down, so now there's no limit.
What is the trigger behind it? What is the thought process in encouraging them to drop it down?
I think it's lobbying by insurance companies. It's, I mean, the system's broken, we know that, okay? Medicare's not paying the cost, and the only one that is, or even approximating it, are private insurers, okay? And so private insurers are looking at this that, and I can see why, that, well, we're getting paid an unnecessary amount or a higher amount, we have to, you know, because Medicare isn't paying their share, and Medicaid is paying less than that. And so services, towns are transferring the cost to, I mean, our rates are much higher than anything Medicare will ever pay us. Medicaid will pay us, but some of the privates will. So there is a cost shift. But the answer is not to class shift it to the property taxpayers in the communities. That's not the answer, and that's, that's the solution that would have been in that budget. And I think it's very disappointing to see that, to be honest with you, but, well, I bet it'll be there next year, too.
Tom, thank you again. You're amazing. And how long have you been in the management role? You came from Hancock, didn't you?
Yeah, I worked for, I worked thirty-four years for John Hancock.
Yep.
And left there in 2004, and been working emergency management this.
Carver is very fortunate to have your long tenure here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah.
I just wanted to speak to Ron's point, too, that he didn't mention that, like the fire department, people want to come here to train with you guys. The reason, one of the reasons we get such quality people is because of our management in terms of you and Craig. And I've heard people say that, this is where they want to be.
Certainly, the department, I think, has come a long way since, certainly since I started. And it's developed, moving to an advanced life support service has brought us to a whole new level. And I, you know, certainly don't do it alone, I have two deputy chiefs working with me. You know, Deputy Karen Feen is essentially doing all of, most of the administration and getting the things to the billing company and, and taking care of so much administration that goes with the municipal ambulance service, probably the most regulated service that you'll ever run into. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous, to be honest with you. And, and Deputy Chief Mike Ryan does our quality assurance, and our paramedic supervision, and Operations Officer John Banzel as well, you know, does a lot of, and is responsible for our training. Our training program's really come a long way in the last couple of years, so certainly not me doing it, it's our team over there that are all working together.
Absolutely.
Mr. Robertson.
I've read your numbers. I just love the way you manage that organization, Tom.
Thank you.
But I do have a question. I did see somebody driving the brand-new ambulance recently. I was...
Was it kind of a bald guy?
Thought I saw Michael, thought I saw Michael driving that.
Well, they'd have to be close.
I, I...
Wow! Kind of a park car with a kind of black hair, I understand that.
The number seventy-seven percent was kind of an eye-opener for me. That was kind of an interesting thing. I assume you're on it and watching any trend that'll come our way on that one, but I, I feel that'll be the future, to be honest with you.
For our town, we're a very busy service. I talk to some fire chiefs and EMS chiefs, they'll say, "Where are you getting these numbers? Why are you so busy? You're only eleven thousand, five hundred people." It's because of elderly mobile home parks.
Exactly, of course, yeah.
And, and, you know, as, as people age, they have a more need for, for an ambulance, there's no question. I mean, twenty percent of the calls come from South Middle Village.
Yep.
And, and all of the parks, you know, contribute more than the traditional neighborhood, okay? And so Medicare, so our Medicare numbers are going to tend to be high, but the Medicaid numbers have really jumped up, too. Collections, collections are going well? This year, they are. We've become, we've got very busy. I think we have over sixteen hundred calls for the calendar year. That was, you know, a fiscal year measurement that I quoted. We were, we're very busy this year.
In terms of collections?
And the collections are, the collections are coming in, I project them out periodically, like every month. And I think they'll exceed last year's by, by, well, right now, maybe by twenty or thirty thousand.
I do want to apologize for being partially responsible for your decrease in funds. I've been trying to cut down the use of your service.
Okay, but we do appreciate the contributions.
And I do, you know, my insurance does. I just, I just can't stress it enough that, you know, if you don't, if you're lucky enough, you know, your family's going to health, you earn good health, you don't use the ambulance service and you live in town, you don't pay for it. This is totally free from the tax base. You know, if you do utilize it, you've got insurance to help you out and to pay for it, but if you don't do it, and let's face it, you know, you've got a lot of runs, but the vast majority of the town does not need the service in a particular year. So they're getting basically free ambulance service. So I think that it's really important. My only question is, because I know paramedics, EMTs, along with call firefighters, are not the most well-paid org- group of people. And as you said, a lot of people, this is their third, fourth job, some of them are fourth job. Are you, you know, but you're not having any trouble attracting quality paramedics and EMTs to keep the force at a sufficient level?
I, I'm not. But I worry about that, okay? And one of the reasons why last year I built in a three percent increase, and I'm doing it again this year, is because right now Marion's paying almost four dollars more an hour for a paramedic, okay? And our EMTs are played, paid on kind of a combination hourly rate standing by, and then so many hours are on a call basis, and that's at a different rate with a two-hour minimum. And that's some, that's something I think I'm going to maybe transition away from over the next year to kind of a straight hourly rate for the EMTs, and I've considered that in my budget as well, that that will mean that they won't be earning a stipend. But stipends don't mean, I mean, I'll let the people decide what they want to do, but stipends don't mean as much as they used to. And people are living a month-to-month, or, and, you know, so, you know, people come to town and they're, they're paid for maybe only seven out of twelve hours, and maybe they don't get a call in the other five, maybe they do, maybe they get a lot and they make out, but it's not a sure thing. And the fact that, well, you'll get a fifteen hundred dollar a year stipend for participating in the system that way, it made more sense when mo- when all of our people were in town. Now fifty percent of our people from out of town. Well, they came to town, they're not going anywhere, they're hanging around the station. And so we're probably going to transition away from that, for those that want to, next year, for the very reason of recruiting. Because to the person outside looking at maybe coming to Carver, that doesn't look attractive to the current millennial that you're dealing with.
Right.
So we, we're thinking about that all the time, and we are making changes. But right now, our numbers are really good, and we've brought in, I think, six EMTs over the past year and three paramedics. And we, and people come and they stay, and, and which, you know, if you, if you have any crude measurement of how you're doing, if you, if you have a lot of people who want to work for you and they stay and they do a good job, you're probably doing something right.
And on that, Tom also turns people away, even though they may have their, their EMTs or they may be paramedics, if they're not the right fit and he doesn't feel they're going to live to the expectations of this department, he actually is, is well-respected that he's got so many people coming that he can pick and choose to do that. But as you said, half the people that work for the department live out of town, and that, that's a change compared to twenty years ago. And so with that, Tom is always reevaluating his budget and how he retains his people. And, and I will say, you probably reanalyze your budget every other month as he plans to figure out what the right mechanism is to, to make sure he keeps, you know, the people in, in the right framework that they need to be in.
Gentlemen.
One question. On the, we have an EMT school here in town. Do you work with them and coordinate with them at all and not use their folks?
Well, if their folks, if their folks get, earn an EMT certificate there and apply, we, we may or may not choose to hire brand-new EMTs. I, I tend to want to hire EMTs with some experience, and so I might often tell someone to go get some experience and then come back. But if they happen to live in town, for example, and therefore might be someone who would be available to handle calls from an off-duty status or whatever, so we do take in new EMTs as well. But not particularly from that school, no. That's, that's a separate business entity, and we don't have anything to do with them.
Okay. I didn't know if whether or not we could use, like, interns or, you know, under job training and coordination with the school. At very little cost to us, but...
No, absolutely no benefit to us, and probably be a great benefit to them. They, they have asked about that, and we're, no, we're not interested.
I would think it might increase our liability also.
Yeah, right. I mean, you lose the opportunity to hire people, and now you have people on your ambulance you don't know just because they paid four hundred bucks to take an EMT course. And we're very careful about who we put on our ambulances, and these are going into people's homes, okay? We have to, we have to make sure that we have the right people. That's a good question. A lot of people think that that's one of our stations. He's got so many ambulances parked there.
Bill, anything?
Just, whenever I hear the ambulance coming down Meadow Street, I'm just glad they're not stopping at my house.
Okay.
And I like it when they're pulling into Meadow Woods, but it's good to know that they'll be taken care of if you do have to stop.
All right. Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Uh, that's, you know, that's to everybody, you and the keeper. Welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I know it, I know it's really roving.
Ten minutes from my bed.
There's no popcorn, no.
Yeah.
I would like to.
That would be fair.
Okay, um, we should be going on to the Capitol Building Project Updates Room. That's the board's indulgence, that we go ahead and move up the request for common particular license, Chan and Guam, for Little Kitchen, eighty Main Street.
Yes.
July.
So, let's, let's, the finance committee close out.
You guys can stay if you'd like, or you can leave, your choice, but we're just getting to our next meeting, having more presentations, mother's parts.
Good night, George.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Drive safely.
Why? We've got a good ambulance service.
So, with the concurrence of the board, if we can go ahead and say you poor gentlemen don't have to sit here anymore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for your indulgence this evening. My name is Attorney Russell Chin. My office is at four hundred Hancock Street in Quincy, Massachusetts, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant for the C V licenses. The two gentlemen with me are Mr. Chan and Mr. Guam. They are the general managers and members of the Chan and Guam LLC, T B A Little Kitchen, which looks to take over the Yummy House Restaurant next to the Dunkin' Donuts. So we've submitted an application. We're here to answer your questions, if you have any.
Ladies and gentlemen?
What's it going to be called? You take it over, it's going to be called the Yummy?
They intend to change the name to Little Kitchen. They will have operating hours of Sunday, twelve to nine, Monday closed, Tuesday through Thursday, eleven to nine, Friday and Saturday, eleven to ten. Those are the proposed operating hours.
Takeout and delivery?
They will do takeout and delivery, exactly. They will do takeout and delivery, exactly.
So, delivery to the town of Kava.
Strictly the town of Kava.
Now, is this how you, you gentlemen bringing in a whole new crew compared to what was there, or we haven't, you haven't carryover from the previous, or?
It's gonna be very, very similar to what, uh, was operating there now. The gentleman who is currently operating, I believe, would like to, uh, move on to other ventures, and , uh, these folks are simply gonna just take.
Just take over that?
That's correct.
And what's the experience?
Uh, both gentlemen have, uh, significant restaurant experience. They both are restaurateurs. They both have, um, kitchen experience as well as front management experience.
Okay.
Any significant, significant changes in the types of offerings in the food? I don't think that there will be, certainly not at the outset. There's no plan, to my knowledge, to change the menu items. Um, I think the menu has been very successful so far, and, uh, they recognize what has been working, and I don't think they plan to deviate from that. I, I guess my only puzzle is, it seems like we just appointed the Yummy House fairly recently, so I was just surprised that it's already changing hands. Yeah, I believe, and, and it's just hearsay on my part, that the owner, you know, has, has other, um, obligations and things that he needs to tend to, and so this restaurant opportunity just came up very quickly, okay?
Is this the first time owning a restaurant?
For either gentleman?
Uh, this is my second time.
This is his second ownership experience? And yours?
Yeah, it's awesome, yeah.
Second.
Excellent. And how long did you own a previous?
Thirty years.
Oh, great.
We normally, uh, operate in, uh, Oak Square in Bryant, at, uh, in Boston area.
Oh, wow, and you're coming down to Kava. I love it.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, you know, too busy in the city.
Yeah, yeah. We're laid back, and we love Chinese food.
Yeah, and, uh, mostly the, the menu might be similar, but the sauce is different. The way we cook might be a little different, 'cause the way, I don't know, you know, it's used to work, but normally they cook by steam and, and put stuff inside and stir it.
Okay.
We cook is by, uh, pre-made sauce, stir fry, make it better, more concentrated and, you know, more stabilized, you know, better than you put the water, put the sauce ingredient, 'cause that would be depend on the cooks. We will be basically like a factory, like we already, every sauce we already pre-made, so the quality will be stabilized.
Your attorney didn't say we like to have samples?
That is pretty traditional.
We welcome you guys, you know.
As soon as they have their license, they have.
You're going down a road I don't wanna go down.
We didn't wanna put the car.
Just, um, if we do grant this license, when would you, uh, be looking to take over and start up the new business?
I think it would be fairly quickly. We, um, we're, obviously have an agreement. We've been in discussions and have, um, documented the necessary forms with the landlord. So everything is ready to go. We're just waiting for this approval. Weeks, you think? Yeah, probably two weeks, two and a half weeks or so.
Time for the Super Bowl.
Yeah.
There you go.
It should be, yeah, by February fourth.
Mr. Robinson, Ms. Hewens, anything?
You know, welcome.
Yeah, I look forward to the business, and I look forward to bringing that place back. Uh, it's, um, I'm very excited to, uh, to try it out.
All right, I'll make a motion. Pushing to approve the common victuous license for Little Kitchen?
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
Pass, five nothing.
Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome to town.
Yeah, thank you.
So glad to chose Kava.
Will you stop with the samples? We have a reporter right here.
Start talking about the different techniques.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Yeah, that's what we're just asking for.
I never knew that. Did you?
Oh, yes.
All right, let's see how fast we can get through the elementary school.
Make sure you share with us.
Huh?
From, uh, that's for the chapter sixty-one?
Oh, okay, yeah, we can do that too. We'd like to.
Nobody wants to stay for the whole meeting?
I have a voter turning on my line, so it's particularly appreciated.
Oh, absolutely.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll be very brief. My name is Joe Shanahan. I'm the Director of Real Estate and Permitting for a company called Clean Energy Collective. Uh, we're a renewable company based in Colorado, but doing business in fifteen states currently, and, uh, in the last eighteen months have done thirty-one projects in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We entered upon an option for a lease with the Kava Middle Borough, Middle Borough Cranberry Company, uh, operated by the Norrie family out of Plumpton, uh, for a piece of property at forty-two Fuller Street. Uh, that site currently is six separate, uh, cranberry bogs. Uh, the thirty-nine acre site, we'll be looking to develop about eleven acres of that. The remaining portion of the site will continue to operate as a cranberry bog. I don't have to tell you folks from Kava what probably precipitated this with the Norries. Uh, they're looking for an additional revenue stream in order to keep that, um, bog operating over there. Uh, we did a similar project with the Norries over in Plumpton, and it's worked out quite well. Um, we have, in fact, gone through your planning board, conservation commission processes and been approved. Uh, I've been in communication with Ms. Vissino. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, uh, with regard to a calculation of rollback taxes, uh, to bring this out of the agricultural designation. Uh, we'll be paying the town a little under nine thousand dollars, uh, for rollback taxes. Uh, I'd like to be able to tell you, this would go back on your commercial tax rule, but I will tell you, as part of our normal process, any project we do in Massachusetts, uh, we ultimately meet with town officials, particularly the assessor, and, uh, enter upon a pilot agreement in lieu of taxes because of the complications. So we'll be reaching out shortly to, uh, your assessor, perhaps your town administrator, uh, to sit down and talk about a, uh...
We, we are familiar with that process, and.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely, we'll be needing to talk to Mr. Milonowski.
Look forward to doing that. So we're here this evening, as you're aware, under chapter sixty-one A. If we're gonna go forward and take that out of the designation, you first have a right of first refusal on the project.
As we're going down fuller towards Middle Boroughs, is this the bogs on the left or the right?
Uh, I would say.
Right, it's behind, uh, Fuller Street's pond.
Okay, you're behind the reservoir?
Yeah.
So basically, you're not gonna really be in view of any houses?
No.
Especially on Leonard de Leville in that area?
No, I've actually gone through the entire permitting process.
Oh, okay.
Really had to remove a butter interaction.
Thank you.
This is much better.
We went out, viewed the site with your planning board. All of your members agreed that it was not any, uh, visual impact to any of the residential property owners down there.
Uh, yeah, I'm well-familiar with that site, and if you're going on those pieces, yeah, you're, no one's gonna see it.
These are the Van Johnson box?
So we don't have any resident issues, 'cause you can't see it?
I would be shocked if there were any resident issues on this, because your nearest residents are up here in Great Meadow. Um, there are residences along Stone Street, uh, but you get, you're looking through the swamp area itself, and then, and then from Middle Borough, but, I mean, you're looking across acres of bogs anyway, so.
Helen, since the first project that was done five years ago, we haven't had any resident issues with neighbors.
Yeah, and this is way farther away, too.
Right. No, it, it appears to be.
I mean, you, you'll barely see them above the dike.
Our first fuller project was problematic for many different reasons, but, uh, none of the other ones have.
I've heard that every public session I've attended over the last nine months, so.
Learning more about Kava than you ever wanted to.
No, actually, I have to tell you, I'm a former selectman up in my hometown of Chumsford. I love coming down here. I love your building, your people, and to hear about your ambulance service and your volunteer fire department.
You don't wanna move down?
Quite a community.
Yeah, you wouldn't have a two-hour ride.
Quite a community. Yeah, but then I'd have a three-hour ride the other way. It'd get a little complicated.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of our, uh, planning director and the conservation agent to, uh, not exercise our option to purchase.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I heard the comment.
I'm gonna recuse myself because I'm in a butter.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't think you'd go see from your house.
Oh, it's not a question of being able to see.
Yeah, I, I agree.
The property line abuts that, their property.
All right. Hearing no more for discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero zero.
Thank you very much.
And again, thank you for the courtesy, you're on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, four zero one.
Four zero one.
Zero one or one?
Excuse me? No, it's four zero zero. Recusal is no vote at all.
Oh, okay, fantastic.
We knew that.
Thanks for the input.
If she was abstaining, that would be a zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's.
Or that'd be a one, actually.
That'd be four zero one, yeah.
Right. See, I've heard this enough times.
Just don't ask me about recused or abstaining, I'm not getting in.
It's a recusal. Elaine's got it.
That, or, or actually, moving backwards. Um, I assume these are gonna be fairly brief?
They're updates, very brief. Um, the elementary school, the project is running on time and on budget. The middle high school is almost complete and on budget. Let's see. Um, the sports complex, uh, we have a new, uh, budget for that. Uh, that we're setting up some follow-up meetings. Uh, we're looking at a grand total of about four million dollars. Of that, um, CPC would, uh, have about three point four million of that, and other non-CPC funds would be about, uh, six hundred thousand. So we're still evaluating those costs, and that's gonna bring it up to our next meeting, um, with CPA and also with the, uh, sports complex committee. Um, and this does include a, a artificial turf field, um, which is about a million-plus dollars less than what some of the earlier costs were, so we've been able to knock a lot of that down.
That's good. Um, any idea when you'd be, the committee would be ready to go for a public hearing on this?
Yes, we are looking at, um, I have that date, um, with the CPC. It looks like we're looking at, uh, tentatively February first. Um, that may move to January thirty-first, but that's the week that's being targeted right now.
I know there's been a lot of back and forth on the, uh, how to handle the sports complex. Are you reaching a consensus now?
Yes. Yes, I think the, uh, the committee has generally reached a consensus, and we had our last meeting, a joint meeting with the CPC committee, and, um, we actually had some higher numbers with them. They gave us some feedback, we've reduced those, and this is what, uh, we believe is consistent with what their approach is.
I've gone to a couple of those meetings, and I was very happy to see that that cost is coming down and coming down, and hopefully it can come down a little bit more.
And, and one of the other side benefits of this, um, is that there, there may be a lot of material left over that would allow us to go to all the other fields, um, at the school and actually do a top dressing on those, to add some more good topsoil on it and reseed that, so it'll help build those other fields back up as well. So, we haven't incorporated that cost, but that would be kind of a separate project to kind of rehab some of the other sites.
Okay.
So, we're trying to reuse the material where possible. Uh, from there, we've got the CO update on the community center, um, is, I'm sorry, COA. As many of you may be aware, um, uh, we did, um, our, the chairman of the, of the committee did pass away, uh, so we're in the process of just, um, uh, just re-establishing some of the new members on the committee, and, um, we'll hopefully move that, uh, forward, um, in the next couple of weeks, and move that along. Yeah, we're still working on the, uh, putting everybody together, to make sure we get good qualified.
I had volunteered to be on the committee.
Good, good qualified people.
Are, are you in town enough that you'd be able to participate?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Just, just wanna double check.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure it's available to the.
I have vested interest in the senior center.
Very much vested interest is there.
Um, so we'd be looking at, uh, hopefully late February, maybe, for a public hearing on that?
I, I would hope at the latest, at the latest. Um, it's just a matter of, of, um, you know, that's just.
Yeah, you're, you're having to make up some steps that you'd already gone through, and I, you know, I think everybody fully understands and is aware of that, so.
As relates to the police strategic plan, um, I talked to the chief today, and, um, uh, hopefully at our next meeting, we'll, if, if the consultants are available, have them come in and present their report, uh, to the board of selectmen. They'll kind of outline, you know, what the chief and their, uh, recommendation is for a strategic plan going forward for the Kava Police Department. Uh, from there, that'll allow us to do some more analysis on, uh, what the building needs are, and we'll also be, uh, moving forward with a, um, a building committee, uh, similar like we've done with all the other projects that we previously discussed. So that's moving along well. And then finally, the last item on the Kava Marion Wareham Regional Refuge District update, um, Dave Robinson has, uh, joined us for the last few meetings, uh, that we've had with that committee, as well as our two new members, uh, were there last week. We're requesting a bunch of data, uh, from, uh, the organization so we can analyze. Um, the committee, um, has, in essence, um, directed that no bills will be paid without their direct involvement in the future, and secondly, they've authorized the three-town administrators, uh, to go forward and analyze the data and help to manage, uh, some of the day-to-day activities of the organization. There'll be a lot more information on that coming forward, but right now, we're still scarce on data, and that data is important for us to be able to analyze what the full impacts are.
Well said.
Do you wanna add anything to that?
There was a, uh, a reorganization. It was nice. The first, uh, meeting that we had, there was a very minimal number of people there, and there was not a lot of discussion. The second meeting that I attended there, uh, there was, uh, more people and much more discussion on how things were operating. And the last meeting, it was standing room only. It was, uh, a lot of people are, um, just looking for the data, looking for the information, uh, that, uh, is elusive.
Kind of coming out of the shadows, more or less.
Yeah. But, uh, you know, I think we got a good handle on where we're going and what we're doing. Uh, it's still in the discovery, still in the investigation form. Um, it'll take a, a while now to, as Michael said, we got the three-town administrators, uh, being literally in charge of the district, uh, for, I think we put a limit on you guys for six months, but, uh, to be in charge, 'cause, you know, how they like to be in charge, you know, so we had to pull that. But, you have a question?
Yeah. I, I happen to see an agenda from a couple of years ago. It was on a half-page at about, uh, twenty-point font with, uh, three items on the agenda, and I happened to see the more recent one, which was a full page with twelve-point font, uh, so that, um, obviously things have been tightened up a little bit. Um, and I know you're looking into trying to get a solid understanding of finances, uh, yesterday and today, but I guess the other, is it gonna be this committee's responsibility to get into the weeds, to start thinking about life after closure of the landfill, um, when, you know, costs may dramatically increase for the disposal of trash?
Yes. Um, I've, uh, put our hands out to, uh, CMAS, the, uh, plant manager there for, uh, a one-on-one plant tour. Michael and I are gonna try to get in there to, uh, meet with them on that. I've put, uh, hands out to a couple of people that run, uh, companies, um, the trash to and from, run the trucks and run that, those companies. Uh, so, I believe, once we get all of that information in there, I believe we will have a big, a better handle on how that's going to, uh, impact us. A date of twenty twenty has been thrown out, but it hasn't been confirmed by anybody, and, uh, the information that we're getting about the, uh, uh, make peace, peace, what's it called, Wan-Kin Ko, uh, landfill, um, there is, uh, less and less ash being put in that, so that CMAS is already being, uh, wise in their business, uh, strategy to seek other places. So where it goes from here, I don't know, but it's a step process right now. We just gotta get with CMAS is the first step.
All right, thank you.
We're also gonna have the three-town administrators, we're gonna put together a regional grant, uh, tied into our community compact, like we've already received from Lieutenant Governor, to kind of, um, begin to start to look at this stuff for twenty twenty as well.
Anything else?
That catches you up?
All right. Board of Selectmen updates. Oh, let's start. My left, I'm left-handed.
Me? Um, I just want to acknowledge the passing of a dear friend and person from Tom Paula Babin, uh, who was, did so much for this town and was an inspiration to me. She inspired me, um, and really encouraged me to run for selectmen as she once was, and, um, her sudden passing. I just want to acknowledge everything that she did for this town. She was a ball of energy, and I, I actually adored her, and, um, I think she will be sorely missed, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, actually, I was going to also mention Paula. I had the chance to work with her for a number of years, most recently, uh, through the Council on Aging, and, uh, she was a force of nature. She really was. You, you, you knew when she was in the room.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe she was probably the first woman elected to, uh, be.
Virginia Ford, oh yeah, maybe she was before Virginia Ford.
She was actually before Virginia Ford, yeah. So that, um, uh, Paula, I mean, I, it seems like I just saw her at a meeting yesterday and she was getting in my grill over one thing or another, and always in a sort of half-pleasant way.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, yeah, I, uh, I have all the respect in the world for her, she did, and she really did a lot of service for the Council on Aging, uh, and for the town, so, um, uh, my, my, uh, thoughts and prayers go out to Paula's family.
I can hear, I can hear her, like, as soon as you walked into the Council on Aging, she'd probably do the same, "Helen, get over here, I have something to talk to you about."
Oh, I, I got to, I got to know quite, her and her husband, Don, quite a bit, too, because they were members of the Lions Club for a long time, and, uh, there's actually a couple of stories that I can't tell, uh, here, but, um, so anyway, just my thoughts and prayers out to Paula's family.
Sarah?
Thank you. Um, I, I was planning to, um, discuss the capital plan that we voted on before, um, a couple of meetings ago, maybe it was just last meeting. Um, I brought this up to Alan, he suggested I just talk about it tonight, and Michael reminded me, uh, before the meeting, that what we had voted on, I'm, I'm thinking particularly of the three building projects that we have coming up, the police station, Council on Aging, community center, and the, um, it's not a, it's a building project, but not a actual building, but the, uh, fields. And so, what I wanted to, to see what we could get on the next agenda was to get all these parties in the room and talk about, talk about the projects, talk about the new numbers, even though they're, those are preliminary, talk about, maybe possibly a reprioritization of that, you know, who comes first, um, 'cause there is only so much money going around. And, um, so, and I, but I don't know if that, that goal I had is really this, that should be the same now because we're talking about having public hearings. Is this set in stone that all three of these projects are going at the same time, that now we're having public hearings to determine what? I mean, I don't know.
I think the goal is that all three of them get funded, and we're working on the finance plan so they, all three can be funded. So it's not that we've, um, at any particular point gone through and said this is more important than the other, they're all needed. Um, so if, if something gets bumped, then you have to figure out which the priorities are, what, what project gets bumped. But for right now, uh, what we've included is to go forward with all three. Uh, once we get through some more analysis and we get ready to vote on the final capital plan, um, then you may want to reassess and bump one, uh, but I'm not prepared to do that at this point or recommend that.
So my, my issue is not that something should be bumped, they all need to be funded, so please don't misunderstand me there. I think they should all be funded. Um, I do know that some projects are probably, have been, you know, in the pipeline for longer than others. I understand, I don't think any of us were able to make the, uh, the meeting about the recreational fields there, but my understanding from a number of people who talked to me who were at the meeting was that there really is a lot of study that needs to still be done, they're, they're not even sure, I know our, our athletic director is apparently, um, is not even sure that we're ready to do that right now. And, um, so at any rate, I think my, my desire would be to have everyone in the same room, all the parties, all of us on the same page, and just at least having a discussion. I don't know what the board thinks about doing that, but I think that.
Just so you know, on that meeting with the Recreation Committee, um, uh, that's not what happened at the meeting. I think all of the members, including Mike Schultz, who's not a member, is in favor of the direction that this is going. Um, and this project, um, has been on the works for at least five years to redo the track that needed to be done, um, so it's been there. And again, um, I do think that all the projects have the ability of being funded, and if it comes back that we can't afford any particular one within our cap, we only have $10 million to spend of town money plus CPC, then we'll have to come back when the board makes its vote on which direction to go, and you'll have to prioritize them.
Plus, if I could just throw in there, um, the fact that each one is in a different stage of planning. I mean, we haven't really even looked at police yet because we're waiting for the strategic plan to come out, and until you see the, we get the strategic plan, we can't even be thinking about, you know, well, okay, what's this gonna look like? And it, until they're all at least partially down the road, I don't see a real value in bringing all the groups in together because they're such, 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 yeah, such different, uh, steps in the process. As Michael says, you know, if we're getting closer to reality and it looks like, you know, "Oh my God, we're not gonna be able to afford this, right, all these three right now," then yeah, you got all three of them in here along with the public and you have a, a discussion about, okay, what are we gonna do about this? But I don't think we're quite there yet, so it's not something I'd put on the front burner. Um, I would, you know, later in the, in the spring, when things are a little bit further along, we have a little better idea of what the police are gonna need, then yeah, I've got no problem with that.
Okay. So, so just to reiterate, I know that none of us were at that meeting, but I did talk to a number of people who were at that meeting.
Now, which meeting are we talking about?
The meeting with the athletic director and.
The field?
Yes.
Okay, I've been to a couple of those meetings.
I meant the last meeting.
Okay, the last.
I'm not here to argue, I'm simply pointing out that that's my understanding of what happened. Um, I want to remind people that there was a police-firestation building study done back in 2006, and that was back when they were thinking of having them combined, and I believe the, the cost then was 6 million for that building. So I'm very concerned that, you know, we couldn't possibly build a police station for $3 million.
Well, we're not even at the design phase yet, though, because we don't know what their needs are, so. But anyway, Sarah, just so you know, right now, uh, the board voted to refer the capital recommendations to the Capital Outlay Committee, and the Capital Outlay Committee will be meeting with all these groups, coming back to this board as we always do with a recommendation as to what we think after we meet with all the boards, and then at that point, it's back to the Board of Selectmen before we go to town meeting to determine what we want to support.
Yep.
And it's not unusual for us to call the various, uh, groups in that are being considered, so we'll, we should definitely have an opportunity to, you know, they're gonna be vetted through the Capital Outlay, and then also, um, they probably, anything of this size, we'll probably meet with before we, um, make a final vote.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, Ron.
And also, one of these projects has a process that it's been going through, and, um, you know, some of the processes have taken longer than anticipated, that's why they're at different levels. I mean, it, it's surprising that the sports complex has moved as forward as quickly as it has with some, you know, unanimity at the last meeting as to what the final outcomes of that's gonna be, whereas the police, um, is, is still subject to getting the strategic plan done, which we need to do, and I think I've already mentioned that the, um, COA was moving along as well, and we've had a little setback on that. But, um, you know, we're, we're gonna try to fund all three of them. Upset?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I appreciate your, your, 'cause a lot of times people forget that there is that process, Ron, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Robertson?
Just a couple of points. Um, the Girl Scouts, uh, last time we met, that we recognized for, uh, their achievements above and beyond the call of duty. Uh, I'm connected with, uh, the Girl Scout, uh, organization through a friend, and she was telling me that they were recognized, uh, after us, um, at the headquarters. Uh, their pictures are up on the, so, um, they were very pleased with, uh, our recognition of their achievements, and, uh, that has been noted up in through Girl Scout Headquarters, so I love to see that. Uh, the last, and another thing I have was, in the last storm, even though we didn't get, uh, caught, uh, all that well, um, you know, heavy snow or, you know, um, the preparation for that was around everybody's house, was, everybody was getting ready for this big storm and everything, but I, I got a few phone calls from residents in town, uh, that told me it was comforting to them for having such a proactive fire department, EMS, police department, and DPW. They were, they, they felt totally at ease going into this because of the organizations that are led by, uh, Tom and, uh, the chief and, uh, Mark and so forth, Craig and mine. So, I wanted to make that, uh, a public statement that people actually called me and I sent a note off to, uh, the chief, uh, saying that it was comforting to them, and he just said, he makes a call, the average call is what, five minutes? So that's, uh, that's pretty impressive. Uh, also, uh, the last thing I have was, I watched an interview, uh, on the Ken Simmons, uh, show, and, uh, I will tell you that it dispelled, uh, probably 75% of the rumors that I get hit with every day, and, uh, so I can only encourage those that are watching, uh, to zoom into that, uh, show. It does answer an awful lot of questions.
But explain what the interview is.
So it was with Michael.
Yeah, but the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Residents don't may not know that. I know he's already famous because of it, but just for those who.
Well, His Majesty, I believe it was.
Basically, Michael did an interview with Ken Simmons, who's basically the talent at Area 58. Uh, he was on the air, I think, for about an hour, being, uh, interviewed by Ken about his role as a town manager, a town administrator, I should say.
Uh, but great questions and great, you know, there was a lot of rumors that Ken brought up, or a lot of thought process, and I believe Michael answered, you know, with data, with facts and so forth, so that was my point of encouragement, is to have people find that show and watch that, because it does dispel an awful lot of.
It'll probably run on TV, but you're, it's usually easier to go off to the website and, uh, look up any of the meetings that you want to see.
Right, yeah.
Directly to Area 58.
On YouTube.
Bobby?
On YouTube?
I don't know if.
It's a link to YouTube.
That's where I'm at, yeah.
Um, just one more thing I forgot. Um, we are now, we're already well into January, February is coming, and I'm going to ask Elaine to go ahead and send out the evaluations, 'cause it's time once again.
Again?
Yeah, we have to do it again.
You just did that.
Um, for evaluations for Michael, I anticipate, I'd like to see those turned into Elaine by the first week in March, so then we can, and again, as we did last year, I would like everyone to meet with Michael, to go over your evaluation sheets with him, um, then we'll get them into Elaine so she can compile them, and we'll go over the results, uh, in public session.
All right.
Now, moving on, okay, we got to chapter 61, common predicament. Uh, establish a gift account for donation of funds for renovating roof of the bandstand in Shertlock Park. Mr. Town Administrator?
That is, um.
Yeah, Connor Skinner, uh, did the project, renovating the bandstand, and there was extra money left over, and there wasn't enough money to do the roof, so he provided some seed money, and I think what he's suggesting is that we establish a gift account where additional donations can be made in order to complete the repair of the roof at the bandstand.
I think it's a great idea, but is illegal.
Yes, if you create the account, it is.
Okay.
And it's for a specific purpose when the donation was done, so the money can only be used for this purpose.
So it can't, it doesn't have to go before town meeting as a revolving fund?
Is there a recognition type of thing, so that if somebody, there was a, um, gift, uh, platform set up for the Union Church, and there were increments of, uh, it was headed up by the Union Church Historical Committee, and, uh, you know, you get your plaque on there with.
I don't think, I don't think that's what this one's gonna be.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is, is, is it just anonymous gifts, or somebody donates to it, or is it individual taxpayers that donate, or is this out of our fund, or what is it?
Sure, so I don't think the intent here was to set up a fund for others to donate to it, but anyone can donate money to the town for any particular purpose they choose to. It was really that Connor Skinner had, um, additional funds left over that he raised for this, and he wanted to put those to a proper use, and he knew that the roof needed to be done, so he wanted to donate the money specifically for the roof.
So it's creating a place to put it, a proper place to put it, and then if the town wishes to contribute some down the road, or if citizens wish to, we would have someplace to put it.
I misunderstood.
Okay, $614 less than it would've been.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to approve it, second.
And second, and any further discussion? All those in favor of establishing a gift account for donations of funds for the renovating of the roof of the bandstand in Shertlock Park, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Zero. Uh, next, approval of the revised USDOT zero-tolerance drug and alcohol testing policy.
Uh, the USDOT regularly updates drug and alcohol policy, and when it does, we have to accept that, so it takes a vote up the board.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Yes, you can. I allowed it. Sort of like remote participation.
Make a motion to approve Stephen Cole, uh, as, uh, Serpent Selectmen's representative?
Second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Stephen Cole as a Serpent, uh, representative, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, four zero zero. Uh, minutes and licenses, the meeting from 11/28/17. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve?
And second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of 11/28/17, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, four zero zero. How about, uh, 12/19/17?
Motion to approve?
Um, could I, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I, I actually, due to certain circumstances at home, I have not had time to look through these executive sessions.
No, we're on, we're doing 12/19.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just so skipping ahead.
We're on the regular minutes.
Never mind.
Okay.
I still make a motion to approve.
I have a motion?
I'll second that.
Second, further discussion on the regular minutes. All those in, hearing none. All those in favor of approving 12/19/17, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, this one's a five zero zero. All right, uh, talking, bring up the approval of the executive session minutes for release. Uh, normally, we would go ahead and talk about these first in executive session, however, there's nothing in any of them that would require us to do that, so that's why we're bringing it out in open session, but I believe, Sarah?
Mr. Chairman, just on that point, if there is any particular item, anybody?